Okay, welcome to the June 27th meeting of the Mashpee Select Board. For Coit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North. Broadcast live on local channel, Channel 18. Stream live on Town and Mashpee website, mashpeemass.gov backslash Channel 18. We'll convene an open session and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is due to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under our invincible liberty and justice for all.
As for a moment of silence for those who lost their lives to gun violence since we last met? Thank you. Before jumping into the meeting, I turn the, or jumping into the agenda, I turn the meeting over to Town Manager.
Yes, I'm pleased to announce to the board and to the audience that we're gonna momentarily display our new seal behind the screen. I would highly compliment our local vendor who did that. Mr. Day does great work and has been doing a lot of work for the town for many years. And this really came out a masterpiece.
It really did.
So, I know we're gonna need the screen, so I guess we can put it back down. But I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so look for a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, June 6th, regular executive sessions, and Thursday, June 9th, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, many motions, second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we've a couple of appointments and hearings. Neither, one of them's not being heard tonight. But none of them I asked to come in. One's Tavola, the special event temporary signed permit, one day liquor license, August 26th, 2022, 5 to 9 p.m., Steeple Street, sponsored by the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. I think fair to say it's become a local tradition for that event. Next is the grandparents' day run walk, a special event temporary signed permit, September 11th, 2022, 8 to 10, starting at the Cape Cod Children's Museum. And then the last hazardous waste collection temporary sign permit, advertising the hazardous waste collection day on August, what?
20th.
August 20th, 9 to 1 at the Mashpee High School. I would advise, come early. They filled up their trucks in Barnstable earlier last week and had to shut down early, so.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's all three. The community healing event was postponed. So next, Catherine, discussion of, as usual, a bunch of things. Start off with the award of the new annual Department Public Works contracts.
Good evening. These are just a few of our annual contracts that were not on your agenda. Last week, or last, two weeks ago, excuse me. So these are the low responsive bidders. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but otherwise ask for your approval of contracts for them.
Anybody have any questions for Catherine?
Catherine, did they go up high in price from years before?
Not significantly, surprisingly.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was my question.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the annual bids be awarded as presented by Catherine's memo?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next up, recommendation for annual contract for a streetlight maintenance.
So this is a new contract. It is a little bit different. This would be a three-year contract with the option to extend for two additional years. It is a bid that we participated with the other municipalities in Barnstable County and Dukes County. Our recommend, my recommendation is that it be awarded to Pine Ridge Technologies, as spelled out.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Catherine on this one?
What, yeah, can you just explain what this contract is for? Is it to repair or?
Correct, repair and/or new installation. So we occasionally do get a request for a new streetlight. So if approved by you, they would install it.
Okay, is there, I'm sorry.
Does, does the town use, have any lights that are energy efficient?
All of our streetlights were converted probably 10-plus years ago through Cape Light Compact to LED.
Gotcha.
Yes.
So no more sodium vapor?
There are a few outliers, but I think we actually just replaced the last of those within the last month. Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve the Pine Ridge Technologies as the awardee for the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then last one, the award of a contract for the replacement electronic partition?
Yes.
Right there.
So we received two bids for this one. So it's the replacement of this partition behind me, as well as removal of the partition that, I don't think I've ever seen it closed. I'm not quite sure what the thought was.
I didn't even know it was there.
It's never been closed.
Right, and just to explain, it would appear that the other bidder was the low, but they did not include in their bid price removing the track. So my recommendation is to award to the Pappas Company.
So you're rejecting them as non-responsive to avoid a big challenge?
Correct, yes.
Very good, Andrew.
Okay, is there a motion to award the contract for removal and replacement of the partitions to Pappas Company?
So moved.
One question just beforehand. Is there any value to the, when you say this has never been closed, whether it has or hasn't, is there any value to these existing systems?
They're, they're so old that the newer, yeah, they do. But the, the new ones have better acoustics, they, they close easier, so there really isn't a market.
Wouldn't go above and below in my bedroom.
I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, good Catherine, you go out of there quick.
I did, thank you.
All right, next is update on wastewater project. Happy to welcome back in a different role Ray Jack, who's, we've seen in the past. He gave a, what we thought was a stirring inspirational farewell on your retirement. Now you're back.
Yes.
So just so everybody knows, I've asked that this be a regular update for the board. So that now the project's moving, a lot of moving parts. I hear it directly from the guy who's supervising it. And I have it so everybody gets a chance to know the same information at the same time and ask questions directly to somebody who's in charge, so. Welcome back, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's actually really good to be here. It's kind of ironic that when I was here last time, it was two and a half years ago, and I remember distinctly saying to the board, after 25 years, I thought that my last presentation would be in Falmouth, and I was standing right here at this podium for my last presentation, so. But thank you and good evening.
Like the mob, you think you can get away and they just suck you right back in.
Yes. Believe it or, believe it or not, though, I think my entire career, and I know it's difficult for some people to understand, but I've actually always enjoyed water and wastewater, all right? Especially as technologies and, and the benefits that they can have in any community, if you will. So that's one of the reasons why I'm really happy to be here on this one and be a, and be a part of it. I'm gonna be brief tonight. This is probably the shortest presentation that I've ever had, but we are just getting started. But I didn't want to start without the board being aware that we did, all right? So that's what tonight's presentation is really about. As we move through in the future, it'll, it'll probably get a little more lengthy, okay? Okay, so this is where we are now, all right? This just started last week in that we have the contracts on the left-hand column, and then we have columns for advertisement plans available, bid opening, and ultimate contract execution. So I'm gonna start out with Contract 1, the Water Resource Recovery Facility. GC stands for General Contractor. And then right below that, you see Contract 1, Water Resource Recovery Facility Subs, all right? That's because we had to have filed sub bidders. By law, under Chapter 149 for any project that is vertical construction, meaning a building that's over $10 million. The collection system doesn't fall into that category because it's horizontal construction, piping, okay? But for the buildings, it's a whole different ballgame. So with the General Contractor, the advertisement was last Wednesday on the 22nd. The advertisement went into the State Department of Treasury for the Central Register. That's where illegally has to be advertised. As did, as did and will all of the others go into the Central Register as well. Contractors have a subscription to the Central Register, so they're always aware of the various contracts that are available in the Commonwealth. So both the General Contractor, as well as the Subs, was advertised on the 22nd. Plans are available today. They were notified of that. There will be a bid opening on August 11th for the GC and July 28th for the Subs. And to kind of explain that, the Subs have to bid first before the General Contractor bids. Then, once the sub bids are in, evaluated, and approved, the General Contractor will select Subs and formulate his contract value, all right? So that's, that's how the process works. So that's why the Subs come in first, followed by a bid by the General Contractors. And then the presumption is to have a contract executed by September 30th. For Contract 2, that's Collection System North. The advertisement will be this Wednesday in the Central Register. The plans will be available on the 5th of July, bid opening on August 4th, which is about a month later, and of course, contract execution on the 30th. Contract 3, that's Collection System South. North and South, generally, we're talking about north and south of Route 28 or Falmouth Road. The advertisement, June 29th, same dates as Contract 2, which is July 5th, for the plans being available. The bid opening is actually 8, 9, not 8, 11, okay? I found that out after this had already been submitted to the board. So Contract 1 is for the recourse, Resource Recovery Facility itself. It's a new MBR facility, and I'll explain MBR in a minute. To be built just south of the transfer station on attractive land the town owns. ADF is the average daily flow, is 120,000 gallons per day. The maximum daily flow is going to be considered 360,000 gallons a day. So it's roughly three times the average daily flow. Contract 2 is Collection System North, Contract 3 is Collection System South. The main difference between these two contracts, because the costs and values will change, is the number of footage of pipe that's going in the ground. But more than anything will probably be the lift stations on Contract 3. That includes three lift stations in there.
Ray, so can the same contractor be awarded?
Yes.
All different phases? Could it be all one contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Usually, usually the, the, the big one, as far as a building, is usually a specialized type of contract. So there are certain contractors that usually bid on that alone. 2 and 3, I would actually hope that they go to the same contractor. It's, it's much better for the town and easier for us.
It sounds like it would be.
Okay, so this is the main plant site, and I said I was gonna explain MBR technology a little bit. I know this diagram is probably a little busy, maybe a little bit confusing, but just to kind of show you where things are here, oops. Over in this little gray area right here, that's considered the preliminary treatment area. That's where the wastewater is going to first enter the facility, all right? And preliminary treatment basically means suspended and floating solids removal. So it'll be a grit chamber there, a vortex type of grit remover, which is like a corkscrew in a tube, all right? And it will take some of the floating material, as well as any of the larger solids, out of the wastewater up to a certain pore size before it even gets to the plant itself. Then in the middle here, the second gray area down here is the process building, and right above it are the MBR tanks, all right? So that's the biological process that occurs right there. In the process building is going to be equipment like pumps, motors, things of that nature, chemical feed, chemical storage, those are all things that are for the process room. But then the tanks is where the actual process occurs. So to kind of explain MBR a little bit, it's membrane biological reactor, and there's three different terms there, actually. Membrane's one, biological is two, and reactor. And they actually have a meaning. So membrane is a type of cellulose filter, if you will, strainer, and it goes by pore size. So in the water industry, and you'll be familiar with this last term, you start out with microfiltration, ultrafiltration, nanofiltration, and then finally reverse osmosis. So the highest level of treatment you can possibly have is an RO plant. And RO plant takes virtually everything out of the water. But it costs a lot of energy to do that, because the pore size is so small, so, so as the material doesn't go through the filter unit, it takes a lot of pressure to push it through that membrane, all right? Now, these membranes here are known as hollow tube. Unfortunately, I actually do have some hollow tubes that I was hoping to be able to bring in tonight, and I couldn't find them. I put them in storage, I guess. But nonetheless, so that's the membrane part, is there will be a physical straining device that the wastewater will ultimately get pushed through. If the wastewater's not at least partially clean before it hits that filter, however, it's gonna clog right up, all right? So that's where the biological process comes in. All wastewater plants, including septic system, are biological reactors, all right? They rely on microbiology in order to break down the solids that are in the wastewater and/or convert nitrogen and other things like suspended solids, biological oxygen demand, and things of that nature. So from a biological perspective, you have what's known as MLSS in this plant. It's called mixed liquor suspended solids, commonly known as sludge, all right? So sludge will be recirculated into the plant. The sludge is the activation process, because it's a living, breathing thing. It consists of biological organisms that have to be present in the right concentrations and the right type of organisms in order to affect the type of treatment that you're looking for. So for this process, its goal is to break down the solids and the organics, all right? Into simpler substances, which an MBR plant does very effectively, okay? So hence, that's the reactor, because it's reacting with respect to activated sludge, okay? Activated means that it's biologically active, all right? So that's where the living, breathing thing of the plant comes from. If, for whatever reason, some type of disaster were to befall a wastewater plant like this, that's an activated sludge plant, if it kills that sludge, the plant is dead. If the plant is dead, you can't operate the plant, because you can't meet your discharge limitations, all right? So then, up on the northern area here, the gray area in here, that's where a transformer's gonna be, as well as the sludge tanks, all right? And the sludge, in this case, for this type of plant, there's different ways of handling it and disposing of it. They start out fairly simple and get progressively more expensive and more manpower intensive. So this one is gonna have about a 2% solids content, and about every 10 days, it's gonna have to be taken off-site to another facility. So the town has already investigated companies that do that, and I think, I think it gets processed by place in Bridgewater, if I'm not mistaken. But nonetheless, that has to be done periodically, because you continue to build up sludge, and you have to be able to remove it, so it's not unlike a septic system. Then on the right side here, the, these darker square-type shapes, those are called RIBs, or rapid infiltration basins, okay? These were evaluated and modeled based on a discharge capacity of seven gallons per minute per square foot of surface area. Those four dark ones are gonna be active as far to the phase one plant. Not all of them will be used, but they will be rotated. And then next to them, you see additional space for any future RIBs that the town may want to put in, all right? And they have roughly.
Is that like a leaching field? Is that where the water's going?
Yes, that's exact, that's exactly what it is. Just has a technical term of rapid infiltration basin. But yes, that's where the wastewater ultimately will go down through the ground, percolate down, and what have you. So that's the main plant. It's not, you know, too, I don't think it's too, too scary to understand on that. And for what it's worth, I have reviewed the basis of design, meaning that engineers are required to evaluate different types of technology. And one of the things you really have to be careful about in New England, it's New England. This is a living thing, all right? It doesn't like cold winters. So you need processes that are capable of being able to withstand that properly, okay? This is one of the better processes for that. So it's a very good design on the plant technology. This is just a bigger overview of the collection system. You can see Falmouth Road that kind of runs right through the middle, transsects both sections. So you have north, which is Collection System 2, and Contract 2. And then south of that, you have Collection System 3. And then I'm just telling you where the lift stations are supposed to be. Falmouth Road is one, but that's gonna be Falmouth Road on the third contract on C3, and Brewster Road, and Mashpee Neck Road. And those lift stations are going to be what's known as a submersible pump. So a submersible pump on smaller installations is much less intensive to build and maintain. So literally, it is the pump and the motor assembly go down in the wet well. And just so we're clear on terms here, and I'm just funny about this with water and wastewater, everybody always calls them pump stations. They're not pump stations, they are lift stations. A pump station is pure water, fresh water, okay? Every town has pump stations for their water system, all right? So you can't have a pump station for a water system and one for the wastewater system, and that they mean the same thing. They don't. So the reason you have a lift station, you start out with a gravity main. Gravity main has a begin point, let's say that it's three feet deep. And then it's gonna drop at basically 2% or quarter inch per foot progressively as it goes down each individual street. It's always going down. So when you flush the toilet or use the water in the house, it's always on a downward flow by gravity. It doesn't need a pump, doesn't need a motor to do that. So that's what a gravity collection system does. But eventually, you keep going down, you're gonna get very deep. And I know in this case, it was evaluated that it would be as deep as 20 feet. So if you ever have to dig that thing up in the future, it's gonna be a costly endeavor. Hence, that's where the lift stations were employed. When you get to that end point or terminal manhole, that's where it's as deep as you're going to go, but now you have to do something with the wastewater. So a lift station receives it at that point, and literally, the pumps lift it up and push it through a force main, take it to the ultimate destination, which could be a plant, or it could be another large gravity main going to the plant, all right? But it is a lift station. So I know it's a subtle point, I just wanted to make sure that everybody fully understood what it was. Okay, so the Collection System North, which is Contract 2, it's bounded by Meeting House Road on the north, Route 28 or Falmouth Road on south, Seoche Condos to the east, and High Sacum Road to the left, or to the west. Now, in this contract, there's a total of 11,600 feet of gravity main, 2,600 feet of force main. Force main is a much smaller main generally than a gravity main. And water, wastewater will be pushed under pressure by a lift station through a force main, all right? So those force mains ultimately will head north. And then you have what's known as a low-pressure main. It's called for 3,700 feet of low-pressure main. Low-pressure main, very small, inch and a quarter at the house side, usually inch and a half or two inches in the street. And these are individual type pump systems, self-contained, where everything from that house will feed into a tank, and then there's a pump in the tank that pushes it under pressure out to the street, okay? And there are a number of different reasons for having those. It's where it's the most effective means of hooking up a home, and I'll give you a quick example. In the old days, a gravity main was limited by its terminal manhole. Terminal manhole meant, this is a point at which it can go no further, and nobody else can connect. Fourth, our low-pressure systems like this completely changed that dynamic. A low-pressure system can pump thousands of feet and make homes available where heretofore they weren't able to overcome the technological limitations of a gravity system, okay? So it really had a huge impact, you know, from an industry perspective, and they're very effective, very reliable. Then we have the Collection System South, which is Contract 3. It's bounded by Route 28 or Falmouth Road on the north, Orchard Road to the east, Brewster Road to the west, and Yardham Drive to the south. So it goes fairly, fairly far south, if you will. 24,700 feet of gravity main, so it's got more gravity main than the other, 5,400 feet of force main, and only 440 feet of low-pressure main. The total main for, which includes force main and, and gravity main, for both systems combined down there, is gonna be about 9.2 miles. And as I said, that one includes the two lift stations. And that was as quick as I can get.
Very informative, Ray. Do the board have questions?
Yes, if you don't mind. Ray, is there gonna be solar on the building to help with the power need? Or does that not, if it's not a big enough rooftop for return on your investment on something like that?
No, it's, it's being proposed. I think it'll be handled as an alternate on the bid. So when you have alternates in a bid, it gives you the opportunity to pick and choose, okay? So if you can afford it, fine, and if you can't.
Okay. That being said, I know you mentioned about, on the map, you talked about the expansion capability, and I understand the, the leaching fields is squares, if you will. Looks like the four, you may use two or three, whatever, in the beginning. So the other four, to what capacity will this plant be able to expand to? Looking at like the previous Phase 2A, B, C, D, and E that were proposed, you know, a year ago or so, is, would this plant handle how much of Phase 2 if we? You know what I'm getting at?
Yes, okay. That, this little area right here, I'm sorry, I'm not very steady with this little green light.
Yes.
But if you could actually see these partition, that's concrete tanks. And if you can see the partitions vertically going up and down there, there's eight of them. They're gonna be using two for the first phase, all right? Which is 120,000 gallons. And then it doubles and doubles and doubles. So the theoretical capacity for that is 480,000 gallons, all right? Then you have, that's one issue, you got the plant. Second issue is discharge capacity. Question is, maybe you can treat it, but you can't get rid of it. So you can't go beyond the discharge capacity unless you take it somewhere else, okay? So for this plant at this time, that's, that's the limiting capacity. Now, you could build additional tankage on there at any point in the future, because the plant is expandable to be able to do that. But you probably have to basically double the size if you wanted to double the volume.
Are you talking about the discharge of the, of the leaching field? Is that what?
No, no. Right now, I'm talk, right now, I'm just talking about the plant's capacity. There's a treatment capacity limitation of the plant, as well as a discharge capacity limitation of the infiltration basins.
How much is going through?
Right.
So the base bid included the two tanks. There are two alternates on the bid.
Right.
One is the second two, and then the third alternate is the last four. So we'll get prices for, you know, incrementally being able to do more. And so if the money breaks right, within the 54 million that we've got, who knows if it will or not, we'd have pricing options to be able to determine whether we wanna, while they're there and disrupting the site, just add the tanks. And then later on, you add all the biological components and the like, but, so we'll see. The other part of it is, Ray didn't mention, is. The other part of it is, Ray didn't mention, is, uh, we authorized money at the spring special to do a s- different pumping test with DEP.
Oh, right.
So that we could possibly get permission to dispose of war-treated effluent at that site. The permit that we've got, the pump test that was based on was very conservative in how, assuming that the site could take relatively little water. And so, the money's there, and it's something that, you know, we'll be tending to over the course of summer, design a new pump test at DEP, and seek permission to put more water in those beds without having to expand or look for an additional site.
So right now, the effluent would actually go into those beds?
Correct.
And then...
And it's just a question of how much. Right now, we're limited to 120 for an average annual day, which is the capacity of Phase One, meets Phase One. But if we wanna do more, we're either gonna have to get more permission to put more in at that site, or find someplace else in town to dispose of it.
Gotcha.
And, and for what it's worth, the way DEP usually handles permitting on these things, um, it's usually based on Title V flows, all right? Which deals with persons and bedrooms and things of that nature. This was modeled with a specific flow rate of seven gallons per minute per square foot for each of the beds. However, um, moving on down the road beyond that, the question becomes, how much of the s- how much of the wastewater coming into the plant is really, um, from the wastewater system? And, and I say that because, think about it this way. Uh, the average per capita consumption is about 110 gallons per day, per person, all right? In any given home, that's average. That's a lot of water. So think about it. How much of that do you drink a day? One person? What, a quart of water? Gallon, if you're tough. Uh, so what about the other 109? Then you start factoring in where it's going. Toilets, sink, laundry, and the big one, discretionary use, lawn water. The good benefit on this is that we'll have accurate metering, because we'll be able to get it from the Mashpee Water District for each individual home. So, the flows are projected, all right? What we will have after the plant's online, the system's built, is actual flow going to the plant. And they're not, I can tell you for a fact, they're usually dramatically less than the projected flows. That's a benefit.
The other factor in this discussion is, the higher you treat to, the quality of water, the more you can put at the site.
Right.
So, there's a yin and a yang here between...
The cleaner.
Yes.
Between investing a little bit more in the treatment process, being able to put more here than, versus the cost of going to someplace else, because treating it's easy.
Right.
Getting rid of it's hard.
Right.
And that's, that's what's hanging everybody up. So if we can squeeze more out of that site with a better pump test, and maybe a higher level of treatment further down the road, we do Phase Two, probably squeeze more, a lot more water into that site than we currently think we can.
And that's a very good point. When I was mentioning MBRs, MBRs are very, very effective, um, from a nitrogen removal perspective. Your typical standard for a community on a, on a discharge for nitrogen is 10 milligrams per liter or parts per million. Typical plant process can probably handle five, all right? This one theoretically goes down three or below. All right? So it's, it's a very high standard of effluent with respect to wastewater treatment.
Yeah, I mean, to make a great example-
And that's what we're looking for.
You could always, you know, you could always throw a reverse osmosis on the end of it, and, you know, yeah, it's gonna cost you more money, but it might be offset by the fact that you don't have to find land disposal site, buy that, treat, create the beds, and then transport that water from there to wherever that's gonna go. So, a lot of open, there's a lot of options.
That is a very good point. Fif- fifteen to 20 years ago, I couldn't believe I did this, because of the limitations in, in the Falmouth system with respect to the plant and discharge capacity, and DEP was giving us a really tough time. It, it aggravated me, and I actually asked our engineer to do an analysis, I wanted him to know, because he said, "You're gonna have to start taking wastewater to the four corners of the world, pumping it everywhere." And I said, "No, we're not. I want you to do an analysis of an RO plant, RO membrane attached to the plant, for the cost differential between that and pumping it everywhere." Because the cost of acquiring and pumping wastewater, you know, to remote regions is high, no question about it. And I, I told myself, I said, "In the industry, I can't believe that in Falmouth, I was, I was actually thinking about RO-treated wastewater, the highest level of treatment you can get." And yet, we didn't have it on our water system. So, but, yeah, that's a very good point.
Other questions?
Uh, just one more quick one. I'm, I'm assuming, um, boy, you never assume. So, um, the expansion of all this, I've heard, but I'm assuming the power, what you're talking about, the north side, the power supply and all that, everything is gonna be ramp-up capable for expansion, correct?
Yes. The only, the only thing that's, that's not gonna be completely equal with any other expansion is probably gonna be the sludge. And that, the, the sludge can start taking up a lot of tankage that get very, very costly, okay? The more a plant expands, so...
We heard that the removal and the sludge is a nightmare, but we'll have to deal with it, that's all.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Amazing.
For now.
I actually understood everything you said. I, I'm, I gotta compliment you.
Money.
I just wanna take an opportunity to publicly thank Ray, because, uh, I think it's obvious he breaks things down in very simple terms. And I have been responsible for contracts or hiring since 1991, and I gotta tell you, I have never seen somebody hit the ground running so fast as he has on this. So I commend him publicly, I praise him, I thank him, and I'm looking forward to working with you to get this moving along.
I agree.
Second.
Thank you all, really, thank you. Thank you. I, I, I meant what I said when I said I love being here, so...
That's good.
Okay?
One question. Um, around the outer perimeter of the, um, discharge areas, uh, is there any way to do solar canopies or anything that would offset the energy? With some of the infrastructure bills that are coming out and things at the federal level, I don't know if there's, uh, opportunities for the town to do something that, you know, if we have a construction-ready project, that would be able to incorporate, um, solar in, you know, as a developed area, that would offset the cost of...
Yes, it is possible, all right? The only, the only caution I would usually hand out is you do, there is an ecosystem impact with solar, that you have to completely deforest, uh, an area in order to accommodate ground-based units. And there is a fair amount of the facility that that will have to happen anyway.
Are you talking about the lease bits? The sand beds?
Correct.
Have you ever seen solar on top of sand beds?
Not on top of them, no.
I think that's what you meant, around them.
I was thinking either around the perimeters-
Right.
You know, in between canopies.
I mean, we made a lot of promises to the neighborhood to, to maintain vegetated buffers in that area, so we have to, there's a balancing of interest there.
I wouldn't wanna clear-cut cheese to do it, but if there's way to put it around the outside perimeter or something, and there was, you know, value to that, that, you know, it was cost-effective.
Right.
That could be something of interest.
Well, it's, I mean, it's definitely something we can look at as we go through.
There's one main building that you can definitely...
What is the life expectancy of the solar system that's out at the dump now? Man, that's been there for 20 years.
And that's, that's usually, believe it or not, that's usually the expectancy, and if it's-
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, isn't it, isn't it pretty close to being timed to, the effectiveness of those units might be replaced, and do the, is it a endless lease that we gave for that, um, that property?
I'd have to research that.
But that would be in the ideal location, and it's, it's existing. The stands are there, they just don't get damaged.
I don't think it's as old as you'd think.
Hmm?
I don't think it's as old as you'd think.
No, it's not.
Cause we had, I, you know, I was back on the board when we had to struggle with N-Star or Eversource to get them to connect the pole.
Right.
So it's, it actually hasn't been running more than eight.
I'm gonna say 12 years.
No.
No?
I'm gonna say six to eight.
I'm gonna say six.
Really? I remember going-
Yeah, cause I've been, I've been on the board for eight now, and I would remember having to call Eversource. So it's been, it's less than eight, that that, not how long it's been built, but how long it's been functioning.
Yeah, because they built that speed bump that they, in the dump-
Yeah, it's eight or less.
They ran the line down that way.
I remember that, yeah.
I thought it was long.
So the panels were still there.
They're usually 25 to 30.
Yeah.
Before they need to get changed out.
Right, I remember the candidate that was running, and that's what they said, to give it to the town after, I think it was 30 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ray, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, um, I'm gonna turn this one to you, Rodney, um, discuss the information request, uh, regarding cesspool locations.
Uh, yes, the health agent, uh, was, uh, sick today, so I don't have any presentation for you, but your information, uh, is going to be assembled-
Okay.
-through the resources of, uh, what's that?
Scanning clerk.
Scanning clerk. I authorized the scanning clerk, uh, which was a position that was, uh, previously approved, but, uh, had not been filled. So we're filling that for the purposes of making sure that, that data is collected. What frustrates me a little bit is, uh, I would've thought that, uh, information was retrievable just through a simple query, and, uh, it isn't apparently that simple. Um, so, long story short, as they say, uh, as Kenny Bates would say, uh, "We're going to get the data, and we're going to, uh, ultimately get it to you." I know you've been after it for a long time.
It's fair.
Okay.
It's fair to say.
Very good. More to come. Any other old business? All right, um, that's it for appointments. Uh, draw people's attention is, uh, communication and correspondence, a letter from, uh, Ms. Cadran, uh, for the board's consideration. Uh, there's no old business, unless anyone has anything. Uh, new business, we've got three items, and then potentially one to add. Uh, first is a request to certify hiring process for firefighter EMT Bruno Araez, um, from Jack Phalen.
All of the town procedures have been adhered to, so request that the board certify the process.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'm moved.
All in favor? All in favor? Uh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, next is, uh, discussion on approval of annual reappointments to boards and committees. You've had this list for a couple weeks, um, mostly reappointments, I believe. Um, and I don't, I don't think anybody raised any issues or any concerns, Rodney, that you are...
No, um, there is one that's gonna be put on hold that I don't think is listed.
It's not on this list.
All right. There's, yeah, there's one on hold that will be discussed by mutual consent July 11th.
I thought it was later, thought they bumped it later. Anyway, whatever, it's not on this list.
Whatever the date is, it's not tonight.
Yep, okay. Um, so we can go through these one at a time, or we could just do, uh, mutual consent to reappoint the list as presented, if people would like to do that. Or if there's any one of these you wanna hold and discuss, we can pull them out.
I'm also.
Motion approved. Just, just reflecting on Arden Russell's, um, correspondence, um, I think she raises some good points. So I mean, the only two that I see on there that, um, kinda correlate with that correspondence would be the zoning and conservation.
Uh huh. I agree with you, but in terms of the-
As far as asking somebody to go back and show an appointment at a time, I'm not sure if, if this is the best way of approaching it, but I think she does raise good points.
Okay.
But these are, um, but again, that's, I think she's referring to how, how we bring on committee members, correct?
Or reappointments.
Or reappointments.
I thought it applied equally.
Was the way I interpreted it, either way.
But...
Yeah, I mean, without, I mean, we can move everything forward, we can hold certain ones for more investigation, whatever, you know, depending on the view of the majority. I don't, you know, I had something that I was thinking about, but I don't have anything that I wanna make an issue of at this juncture.
Neither do I, at this time.
If I could, Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is, if somebody had specific concerns relative to a particular meeting, or incident, or issue, if the date and the time, the place, and the particulars were brought up to our office, we could, uh, try to do some fact-finding, and then provide some sort of summary, uh, through town council or the appropriate party. And, uh, obviously, uh, under the charter, I believe it specifically says, uh, "Good cause," uh, a committee, commission, uh, or board member could be removed by this board, if they're not elected. If they're elected, then it's recall, and that's it. But, um, if it's, uh, a committee or a commission or board member that's appointed by this board, then you could take a look at them, uh, if there was a reason to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, looking at a little further into the process of just approving almost like a rubber stamp, anybody for, that comes in front of us. And I think that, maybe that's even the point now, is, we're talking like the sewer commission, you know, granted, it was Thursday afternoon, three people got recommended to be for consideration, but again, the agenda was made on Thursday, and there's no need to rush. And I would, I would agree with that, and maybe the next meeting, maybe we can have, you know, all those candidates come in front of us, and we, I think it's, I think we have to ask those tough questions, because it shouldn't be just a stamp and form-
Yeah, I mean, it's my intention to ask the candidates to come in and have a conversation.
We have, we have, when they've asked to be on the-
But, but you know, to speak to David's issue, you know, I think, you know, there's this tension between the throwing people's names around with raising questions about, you know, their suitability to serve, without having specifics. And, you know, we've tried to, tried to limit the sort of casting about aspersions about people's reputations without having anything to back it up. So, you know, nobody's presented anything, to my knowledge, other than the one we're holding, and the applicant is aware of that and supportive of the idea of holding it.
Absolutely.
Um, absent that, you know, I don't have any basis other than, you know, some rumor of somebody might've said something about somebody to hold anybody. Um, so I think if we, you know, if there are concerns, I think, you know, we should, you know, these are not life, you know, this is not the Supreme Court. So, you know, um, you know, somebody does something that violates, you know, ethical and, and community standards and, and conflict of interest, you know, and they're appointed by us, uh, we can remove them. Um, and so, you know, but they, you know, somebody's gonna make the case for that.
Right.
Um, you know, and I'm not sure that this is the venue to do that without a specific concern.
Concern, right, I agree.
No, I, I, and I agree with that completely. The, my, my concerns, uh, kind of focus more so on, um, variances and how often variances are issued and things of that, collectively as a board, not, you know, looking at individuals particularly, but, you know, board decisions where variances are, are granted, you know, hand over fist, to where, you know, the, the laws aren't being applied effectively to meet the goals that they were intended to.
I would share your concern, I'd love to see some data.
Yeah, I, I just need some support.
Right, so I mean, yeah, we need some information about whether, you know, you hear it, I don't know whether it's true or not.
I don't know if holding back on this list is the best way of doing it, addressing that though. Yep.
All right, so, is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve list as permitted.
Is there a second to that? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I think, if there's specific questions, or CBA or something else, I think it's well worth getting the information. Uh, update on clear-cutting lot 64, 58, and 54 Elgonquin Avenue.
Yeah, there's, uh, memos in your packets on both of these. 25th, uh, they were supposed to, uh, back to us, the Gate Cut Commission, I mean, to the planning board, actually. Um, they did not, uh, send back anything. So what you have is memos, is where we are currently. We're waiting to hear from the Gate Cut Commission.
The 25th, 25th was Saturday, so...
I don't know, but that's what they had told the planning board.
Okay.
Or the planner, I'm sorry, not the planning.
All right, so can we follow up tomorrow with the commission to get a, find out? And then, second memo, the landowner denied permission for the conservation agent to enter the property to determine whether there's a wetland violation, whether it may be and may not be.
We've got, we've got alternative means.
Okay.
I'll just leave it at that.
All right, very good. All right, this will be a standing. So is the stop work still in place?
Excuse me.
Is the stop work still in place?
That wasn't lifted.
Is it being adhered to?
Well, there's nothing been done recently, or I would have heard by a few residents over there. So I don't believe any more has been done, but the damage is done already as far as I'm concerned.
That was the plan.
Those are running fines, correct?
Yes, that's how I understand it, yes.
Okay. So anyway, that'll be, that's going to stay on the agenda until it is resolved satisfactorily. And last, on new business, turn it over to the town manager for a recommendation from town council.
Yes, council earlier today sent this information, and I quote, "We attempted to record the taking orders and the revised plans at the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable today."
This has to do with the sewer lines.
I'm sorry, yes, the sewer lines.
And the pump stations.
He's always going to get the last word in. "While the orders themselves are ready to record without any further town approval, the plans submitted therewith were lacking certain information that the registry is requiring for recording, specifically certification by the engineer surveyor that the plans conform to registry recording requirements and approval of the plans by a town board, either the select board or sewer commission. To confirm the town's acceptance thereof, the original sets of plans to be recorded with the orders were assembled and modified by the former engineer from the project design and construction plans previously prepared by GHD." So what council is recommending, and the assistant can elaborate, because I was in a meeting earlier, and I think you spoke to him.
Yes, sir.
Is to add this to the agenda, because it was clearly unanticipated. And then, secondly, to approve, but specifically, you can sign later, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
And speaking to Pat, the milars were held up and did not get here in time today. They should be here tomorrow, but it's something that we have to get recorded by the end of this week. So they have to be recorded. If we approve it here now, it's just the milars a signature page, that's all it is. All of this has been checked out through Pat and his legal team. Legally, I asked him if there's any legal issue with that. He absolutely said no issue at all.
So I'd look for a motion to add.
Motion to add it.
And add an agenda item.
Yes.
It authorized the board to endorse the revised wastewater taking plans for the easements orders of taking.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's been added to the agenda. Next would be a motion to endorse the revised taking plans for the easement orders of taking.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Please let us know when the milars are in. People can come sign them.
And then I'll just need your signature, but it's been approved.
Right.
Do we have dates of when they were last revised to add to that?
Well, I know that they didn't have the proper milars. That's why they had to be done, so they've been revised quite recently. Unless you know more, I know you were at GHD, Ray. Is there anything you could fill in on that?
They're revised today, according to Pat's memo.
There was a day and time, twenty years ago, where milars were commonplace.
Can you turn that mic up?
Turn it up?
Yeah.
Just up, I told you. Yeah, there.
Okay. There was a day and time, twenty years ago, when milars were commonplace for recording documents at the land court and the registry. It's much difficult, much more difficult today, all right, because they're generally not required. It's even hard to find a company that actually makes milars. You'll have to have a special pen in order to sign a milar, all right, but nonetheless, the registry has required that we have to have the milars for each of the individual takings and easements that we had. The copies that were submitted were not going to be considered to be sufficient. So it's unfortunate, there had to be some change, last minute changes made. But my understanding is that you will have the milars tomorrow, okay, and we would be able to facilitate that.
And we'll just let you know, and we'll need your signatures.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
All right, any other new business? Any additional, I suppose this could have been additional topics. Any other additional, additional topics? No? All right, liaison reports?
I have just two questions. One is, I'm getting a lot of calls on our cell tower.
There's nothing left for the town to do.
Right, well, that's what I need.
So it's in the hands of Blue Sky. There's literally nothing left for the town to do.
Okay. And number two is nine fifty Falmouth Road. Any updates on when we might be putting a shovel in the ground?
This fall.
This fall is when it is happening. I spoke with David at Power and Hack, and he indicated that all the funding is in place now. Everything's going through the procedures that has to be done. And that sometime this fall, they'll be digging and starting that process.
Thank you.
We'll have two groundbreakings in the fall, wastewater plant and housing.
Right.
I'll get the gold shovel out.
There you go.
Yes.
Town manager updates?
Yes. First thing I want to mention is the. I can get my notes here together. The police department was pleased to announce that a team of assessors from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission that was scheduled to arrive on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, did and began examining various aspects of the Mashpee Police Department's policies and procedures, operations and facilities. Verification by the assessment team that the department meets the commission's standards was a part of a voluntary process to gain state accreditation, a self-initiated evaluation process by which the police department strive to meet minimum and maintain standards that have been established for the profession by the profession. The Massachusetts Police Accreditation Program consists of two hundred and fifty-seven mandatory standards as well as one hundred and twenty-five optional standards. In order to achieve accreditation status, the department must meet all of the applicable mandatory standards as well as fifty-five percent of the optional standards. Achieving accreditation is a highly prized recognition of law enforcement professional excellence, and I am pleased to announce that that was approved, and I'm just trying to find the date.
Recently.
It was approved, it looks like officially June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So I believe there's only two or three on the Cape. So I'm pleased to say that we've joined.
Send our commendations.
They're the third department on the Cape to reach full accreditation, the others being Orleans and Dennis. So I just want to salute Chief Carline, because he has worked endlessly on that. He started that task when I was chief, so that's how long ago it started. And he has worked tirelessly to achieve that, and I'm pleased to report that he's finally reached that goal. I might turn to Selectman Whedon on this, but I just want to bring to the board's attention, the sound system at the tribal government center is not fixed. So the joint meeting that's scheduled for July eighteenth, the part that was maybe going to come in, didn't come in. So the option of portable speakers does exist, but the live broadcast would not sound that good. So if you did receive complaints, I just want to make you aware of that. Or the other option is to record it and then broadcast the recording, or consider another alternative. And I know that the assistant spoke to some folks down at the tribe. So I just, I just want to make you aware that the sound system is not what it would be here, not that this one is magnificent.
What do you want to do?
I mean, I don't think, I don't know if live is necessary as long as recorded, and everyone could watch it afterwards, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'll be fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with recording and, you know, do the, we typically in our meetings, anyway, we do speaker system.
That's what Amber had suggested that they could use. The only downside to that is they only have two or three mics. You'd have to go around and pass the mic all around to get the sound on to the recording. I had started, as you all know, in May, trying to get this lined up. And every time we've come down the pike, it's, still haven't been fixed, still haven't been fixed. And I don't know what it means. I don't know what their issue is with it. But, so I just wanted you guys to be sure that the eighteenth, you realize it wasn't going to be mics and there wasn't going to be.
I think it's important to have. We can't keep.
That's right, and just have it recorded.
Let's make it work the best we can.
And I'm not suggesting that it be postponed. All I'm making you aware of is of this situation. So when you get down there, you don't look at me and say, well, you didn't tell us.
Well, if they're comfortable with, I mean, they would know if it's the recording quality that is acceptable.
No, it's MTV that would record it, and they have done that for the school committee at one point.
And it worked.
And he says it's not the best sound, but it's audible and you can do it.
As long as they can, yeah, do what they need to do to record it.
Let's go, let's go with the meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so nothing changes. I just wanted to make you aware of it. And I did approve a signed permit for the power. I couldn't get them on the agenda because of the timing. So I just want to let you know I signed off on that. And there was a question, and I think it was Selectman Whedon, regarding parking and fines, whether or not the select board can change the.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was you. All right, Selectman Cotton. According to town council, yes, pursuant to general law, chapter forty, section twenty-two, the board can establish violation penalties amounts in vehicle parking rules and regulations they adopt in such amounts as they deem appropriate.
Don't we have to hold a public hearing?
Yes, but, I mean, that's.
Yes, please.
The eleventh?
So.
Whatever, do we, do we have enough notice?
I'll check.
All right, as soon as the notice requirement.
So there are no statutory limits on such rule, regulation penalties. The only thing I would ask, Mr. Chair, is can we kind of take more of a global look, because this information kind of gives me the thought that I may want to check with a couple of departments to see whether or not.
Our urgent.
Yeah, just, well, it is, you know.
Yeah, we can come in and.
Let's do it right. I don't want to be, just, I just want to do it right.
Take care of it all at once.
That's all. But it's a.
And the board can adopt parking restrictions, regulations for townways or any other town owned property, including parking lots, landings, et cetera, over which they exercise jurisdiction and control.
Right. Well, I will tell you, I used Great River Boat Ramp yesterday, and when I was walking back to my car, I counted who had a Mashpee sticker and who didn't, who was parked in the spots, and nine of, nine of the seventeen spots were occupied by people without Mashpee stickers.
So you feel my pain.
And I'm guessing none of them got tickets yesterday.
Well, we didn't have anybody on duty, though.
I'm just saying.
When do they start being on duty?
Not yet.
Well, they're not on duty at Great River.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah. So anyway.
Yeah, it proves the point.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring that up, and I'm sorry, it was Selectman Cotton.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, public comment. I know that Sue Dangle is going to speak, so Kathy gets to think. That it? Just Sue?
Where do I go?
Right there.
Right here.
Yeah, sure.
Great. Good evening. My name is Susan Dangle. I'm at seven sixty-two Cottouat Road, and I want to thank you all for letting me come to speak tonight. I was chuckling this evening because last year I was here, actually, one year ago yesterday, I came to speak to you. I had my cards with cyanobacteria spelled out phonetically so that I said it correctly, because Mashpee Wakebee was, had an advisory posted for no swimming, and we were coming up against the July fourth. Well, here we are again with the same situation. Yesterday, Mashpee Wakebee was posted with a cyanobacteria advisory, and we're coming up against July fourth weekend. On the good news, I've worked with many of you over the year, and I've learned an enormous amount about what needs to be done to take care of the problem. Most importantly, searing of the ponds. The ponds have a phosphorus issue, and phosphorus cannot be removed from an IA system, only from a sewer. So we are banking on the searing coming to the ponds and are thrilled that we are in this phase two, A through E. With the exception of Wakebee is not in that because it is scheduled to be seared by Sandwich. So we're hopeful that communications between the two towns are still ongoing. So we're also thrilled with the fact that the diagnostic pond study that you all recommended that we pursue and as a town is underway, and we're thrilled. We had the opportunity over the weekend to have Ashley Fisher come to our first annual Save Mashpee Wakebee Pond Alliance annual meeting, and she was, she was a very popular person. She fielded questions for over thirty minutes about the pond study from residents. How can we help? What can we do? What does this mean? What does that mean? It was a very wonderful exchange of ideas. But it brings me to the point that Mr. Jack, right, brought up at the Sewer Commission, we need to have continued communication about where the sewer is going. Tonight, we were, I am so overjoyed to see phase one being put up in lights and know that we have things coming in the coming months. But phase two, which we thought was going to be, having design funds available in May, was going to be pushed to October, and I still haven't heard anything about phase two and where that stands. I recognize that there's a lot of work that has had to happen with some personnel changes, and I'm thrilled that we have a team assembled. But I'm hoping that we will hear very promptly that phase two is back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. So in light of that, also, just for the next meeting, I talked to Rodney about this earlier today, I'm going to ask Ashley to come in. I think a lot of the information she shared at the session would be good for people to hear about developing understanding of what the issues are in Mashpee Wakebee, and so the board can take that into consideration, that we think about things. And then the other main part of next meeting is you got a couple of weeks ago, an outline from DEP on some proposed regulatory changes around Title V. So I invited the commissioner, the Southeast Regional Director, finance head, and the person who runs water programs, to our meeting to explain what they're proposing and to answer questions. So they did that Thursday night in Wellfleet. Thursday night almost turned into Friday morning by the time it was done. So, but it was a very useful dialogue between their board and leadership of DEP. So they'll be here to do the same thing for us on the eleventh.
Should we have any other boards in to listen to?
Yeah, we're going to invite some others, too. So eat before you come.
Yep.
Take a nap. It'll take a while, but it'll be worth it. So people are encouraged, if you're interested and concerned about those Title V changes as they relate to nitrogen. They don't do anything for phosphorus.
Should we start at six?
Huh?
Should we start at six?
I told, well, we've got some stuff already booked in that's going to be quick. So we're going to have them come at six forty-five.
Okay.
And then there were a couple of hearings that were, like, already scheduled before that came.
Fifteen, fifteen minutes.
I gave them fifteen minutes. So, anyway, just to be aware and be prepared for that, it should be a good conversation. I encourage people who are interested in the issue to come and listen.
Excuse me, Andy, what did you want Ashley prepared to come in, to speak to all the ponds or Mashpee Wakebee or?
Well, specifically, I mean, she can touch on the other ponds, but specifically, some of her initial findings. I think they inform well beyond where we were just six months ago about what they're seeing and the understanding about what the phosphorus sources are, because that has a big influence on what you do to control. So I think it's a directional refinement that actually informed my information that would be good for people to hear. So it'll be a lot of wastewater talk on the eleventh. And then there'll be the Sewer Commission appointment discussion, and we'll probably try and keep the rest of it relatively clean, because it's going to be a lengthy conversation.
Andy, will you get back to us with who others you want in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else from anybody?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All right, we're done. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.